Good evening, everyone. Could we have everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Laura Toye?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Toye? All right. We are going to start the meeting. Sarah, is it fine if I start it with our guest today? Okay, so we do have special recognitions and tributes. Is Joey Kula available? I'm supposed to... Okay, so Joe, let's everybody give Joe a round of applause because he's doing this for... What are you doing it for? Scouts? No.
School project.
That's right. So he's doing it for a school project. So listen, if someone refutes or disputes that you weren't at City Council, just show them the video. All right. I appreciate it, man. Is that good enough for you? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Joey, for attending. And he's here. I should have read the notes. For a civic engagement project. So thank you for doing that, and we just check that box for you. All right. Everyone, welcome to the 2011th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes from this meeting will be approved that the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on, believe it or not, Monday, March 10, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Toye?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Scheel?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. And we show all seven members of council here. I will now entertain a motion for the revised minutes from the regular meeting of the City Council held on November 18, 2024, and minutes from the regular meeting of the City Council held on February 10, 2025. You may see that the 24 is obviously...
Support.
Yes. Basically, it's just a paperwork. We had to, I think, update some of the minutes that were not right. So that's what that's for. We have a motion. We have support. Do we have any comments from the audience? And this is on the minutes from the last meeting? Okay. If it's just on the minutes from the last meeting, this isn't public comment just yet. So if you want to talk about the minutes, okay. Don't see anybody. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toye?
Yes.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And the minutes carry, seven to zero. All right. So now I'm going to go to the audience for items that are not currently listed on this agenda. And you will have three minutes. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. I'm Betsy Calhoun, speaking on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission. We'd like to give you a brief rundown of our recent achievements and our current goals. I will be brief, but if council would like to pre-approve this presentation for up to five minutes, more like three and a half or four, in case I run over, that would be appreciated. Laurie said I didn't need to be on the agenda since there's no action required.
I'll make a motion to allow for up to five minutes.
Up to five?
Support.
Madam Clerk, please, there's a vote.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Budzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Scheel?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
And before I... So truthfully, normally, we don't do this. I do want to explain because we do have our Rules of Roberts, and I know Councilman Donovan, because our parliamentarian will do that. But since this is a member with the Green Leaf, we're going to extend it to find out these.
Historic Preservation Commission.
Historical Preservation. Yes. So, no, that's that hat she's wearing, so please feel free of five minutes.
Well, I was just going to say, as the motion maker, that yes, that is why I felt it was appropriate to make the exception since Betsy Calhoun had identified that this was going to be a presentation on behalf of the Historical Commission to provide the public an opportunity to hear what happens at those meetings, which are held and open to the public but not recorded for viewing. So thank you for being here.
Your clock has officially started.
So the unofficial subtitle of this overview is, "What the heck does our Historic Preservation Commission do, anyway?" For the benefit of the audience, our stated purpose is to safeguard the heritage of the city by preserving historic resources that reflect elements of the city's history, architecture, archaeology, engineering, and our culture. This role is codified as per city ordinance, which echoes the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHPO, guidelines, which in turn derives from the Secretariat of the Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. More specifically, we are responsible for monitoring the exterior of Livonia properties on the state and/or national register of historic places, or locally listed, as many of the green buildings are. We work under the auspices of the city's planning department and coordinate with the inspection department as needed. Last year, we created, implemented, and tweaked a Certificate of Appropriateness, or COA, application form for exterior property work, which, while not a state requirement, does allow for consistent documentation and communication between the HBC and owners, some of whom are the city. We are quite pleased with the results of the mini survey we commissioned last year. It included half a dozen sites, a couple of houses of different time periods, the Livonia Public Schools, Central Office Campus on Farmington Road, and the Winter Garden Tavern, which had a speakeasy in the basement. Most of these properties are too changed to be eligible for register listing but are still an important record of where we've been, and this evidence is now on file with the SHPO. You can find a link to this interesting illustrated report on the HPC's city website. So this year, we are planning to commission a windshield survey of the city, quadrant by quadrant, in order to document our built heritage of various eras. This investigation may turn up sites worthy of greater investigation, and in any case, it's important to record our local architecture as we celebrate our 75th year as a city. The latest date of a historically listed property in our community is the 1920s, so Livonia really needs to seek at least one good example to preserve from each subsequent decade. The HPC was also approved this year for an increase to six annual voting meetings from four, bringing us in line with other local historic preservation and district commission practices. Preservation keeps our community unique, with a balance of old and new. We need both. By giving old places new uses, making compatible additions, and integrating new development, we get a vibrant mix of places and a distinctive, livable community that sustains and attracts residents, businesses, and visitors. Think of Bates. Preservation helps to guide and manage change to places people care about. The resumption of school field trips for nearly every LPS second grader, courtesy of the Livonia Historical Society, is a recent highlight. By reaching out to our youngest residents to provide positive, hands-on historical experiences, the stage is set for their future interests and investment in our community. Historic places hold the power to serve the public good, improve people's lives, foster community identity, and enable a shared future in which all people can thrive. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
No.
When's your next meeting?
March. We're meeting January, March, you know, and it's on the website, too. But by having a consistent... Again, it's easy for anybody to show up, but sometimes I've sometimes gone to people's houses and say, "Oh, I have a historic house. Can you come over and look at it?" And I can look at it and give them ideas for research or whatever, so.
That's awesome. No, thank you for sharing that.
Okay.
And I think you were pretty close to under the three-minute mark, so.
Thanks.
Have a good one. Good evening. Name and address.
Hi, everybody. Chris Henshaw, 9812 Cranston, Livonia. I was extremely excited when I heard that Livonia was going to do a City Hall. I think it's something so many of us, you know, go to Farmington or Plymouth to experience that downtown feeling and the activities that they have there. But I recently saw all three proposals for the downtown, and I didn't see any downtown. I saw lots of development, which is going to be like a nice windfall for the residential developers, and it's very cute for the people who are going to live there, but I didn't see anything for me there. I didn't see, you know, it's just a lot of new housing, and that's not downtown. That's not a downtown. And I understand that we're going to be asked to pass a millage to pay for a lot of this, and, you know, maybe I'm missing something. But right now, I'm very disappointed with those three options, and I wouldn't vote for a millage for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I know what time it is. Name and address for the record. Tell us about what we got going on.
All right. Carla Truxell, 29583 Jaclyn Drive in Livonia. I'm here. As always, I come with good news, happy news. I am the founder of Espian Survivors. We are a local to Livonia nonprofit, all about mental health education and suicide prevention. And starting March 1st is our annual fundraiser called Movin' with Moose. And I just came from Franklin High School at their parent fair, so I actually brought show and tell. But this is our moose. We call these... And this is our loyal pup. We call these our battle buddies. We've had them since 2015. And when we brought them to life using illustration and gave them names and occupations and a healthy coping skill and a building block to help us teach mental health education to people of all ages, it just seemed obvious when we took our six coping skills and were identifying how we could create events with them that, since Moose is our athlete and his coping skill is movement, it should be called Movin' with Moose. So this is our third annual Movin' with Moose. For the first time, we're doing a kickoff event this weekend at Laurel Park Place Mall. We've reserved the carpeted area by the fireplace to have a table and to, like, walk our first... Excuse me, our first mile or more together. But Movin' with Moose is all about getting out there and moving. It's a healthy coping skill. It only takes 10 to 15 minutes of movement to improve your mood and overall health. And the one thing I wanted to share with the work that we do, our number-one obstacle is that people think that mental health is the same as mental illness, and they are not. They are two different things. Just like you take... Do things to take care of your physical health to avoid physical illness, the same is true for your mental health. And so movement is one of those easy-to-do, healthy coping skills to help you take care of your mental, emotional health. And we invite everyone to join us, to help support the work that we do, but also lead by example and get out there and get moving. So, thank you.
Awesome. No, thank you so much. And I know our vice president... Oh, yeah, she's going to talk about it, but our council's jumping back in this. We'll talk more when we get to council. But thank you for all that you do, for everybody that's watching, everybody at home, everybody in the audience. You know, grab a flyer. This is some of the most incredible work we have done in our city. So one thing I love about Livonia is the amount of service groups we do have, and, you know, thank you for all you do. In any way we can support it, we will.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hey, council.
How are you?
Scott Barr, 18547 Williams. It's a unique experience being on this side of the podium. So, hey, I did want to just come and talk to you. Obviously, there's been a lot of talk about the downtown, and I, for one, am enthused about the redevelopment of Five and Farmington. I think the mayor deserves a lot of credit, honestly, for picking up the ball of Vision 21, casting a vision, consistently communicating that vision. That's all good leadership. I know there's a lot of opinions. You just heard some tonight about what that development should look like. That's not why I'm here. I want to talk, surprise, surprise, about financing. So just some context. I know you all know this, but just to set up what I want to say here, there's two big initial pieces for this project that are within the control of the city. That's the new City Hall and the new Police Department. And there's really two primary ways that we can pay for that. Either they're out of existing funds that we find, or we're going to the taxpayers for more funds. The talk thus far, as you're well familiar with, is to bond, which is like a mortgage for the City Hall, and is possible within the current budget, and then to pass a millage or a new tax for the Police Department. Now, we know this is purposeful, that they're in that order. We all know that it's a lot easier to pass a tax for public safety than there is for a new City Hall. And that's fine. I get that. I mean, that's just... That's good politics. That's... And you're going to have to, one way or another, there's going to be new taxpayer funds involved with this. So I don't actually even have an issue with that. What I want to talk about, though, is just as a taxpayer, not a councilman anymore, but it's a taxpayer, who's going to be asked to vote on this millage, I want to know that the city's only charging me for what is needed, not maximizing what it thinks it can get. And so last fall, the council issued a letter of intent to bond for up to $45 million. And I know several of you, I specifically remember Councilman McCullough and Councilman Donovan, there may have been others, expressed concern that that... It wouldn't take that much to do a City Hall, and I, from my opinion, agree with you. Some of that money, then, could go towards a new Police Department, reducing the amount of the requested millage. And so I think council's goal should be to pay as much as possible of that total project with the bond. I actually don't have a problem. If the city can afford the $45 million, go for the $45 million, but just not under the auspices that that's all for City Hall, when some of that could be used for the Police Department. And so my request for you tonight, as a taxpayer, is that as you're going through all this, and I know there's the meeting on the 12th to go through the design, and there'll be plenty of time to talk about that, but when it comes to paying for this, that you put a complete plan together that you can show the citizens of Livonia that allows you to say three things. One, here's the total cost of what we want to do. Two, here's how much of that cost we can cover with the bond. And then, three, what's left over be all that you ask for the taxpayers. I think if you do that, that level of transparency will increase trust with the citizenry and thus increase your odds of getting the approval that you're looking for. So, thanks. Good to see you all again.
You, too. Thanks. Councilman Barr?
It is great to see you, as always.
Former, former.
You know what? Former. It's sometimes funny, because I looked at him at the di... Or right there, and I go, "Man, I'm kind of jealous of that at sometimes." No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, good evening. How are you?
All right. Greg Ralco, Gulf Ridge Villa. I just want to know if anyone's followed up on the Eight Mile in Newburgh property. As you recall, sheets on numerous occasions mentioned that that building was falling down, and since the city is aware of that, and if something were to happen to that, the city would obviously be named in a lawsuit as a defendant. So I want to know if anyone's taken care of that, and if the city engineer, inspection, or whoever is looking into that building. So that was the first thing. I agree with some of the comments tonight about the city center, particularly the woman that preceded me on this side. Downtown should not be government-building centric, because then you don't get the return. It's closed at 5:00. And so anything you do needs to be on a tight budget, particularly with a shrinking population, because we peaked at 110, now we're down to 92. Seventy-eight... Or 14,000 is under the age of 18. So I think you have to be very cognizant of that. And the illusion is that we're not going to get... We're not going to get a downtown area like Plymouth or like Northville, because it's commercial-centric. We missed that boat 100 years ago, when those cities were built, or however long it was. But we have to be very cognizant of that. It was amazing that I read that the $45 million's already been paid for with the savings from this retirement benefit that we've redirected our seniors or our post-65 retirees to a Medicare supplement or Medicare Advantage. So there's... All of a sudden, we got $2.5 million, but we're already going to spend it. I think that's wrong. The operating budget had a surplus of $2.5 million this year, beginning this year. And let's be honest with the residents of the city, that we're going to do a $45 million project, and we're going to pay for money that maybe we ought to just knock down the next assessment by $2.5 million. Maybe people would, given that option, they say, "Yeah, that's a good idea." So I think those are things that... There has to be a full disclosure. This just... You know, I'm a finance guy. Just, I felt queasy when I read it, okay? Because this is a capital project. Let's be clear. It's a capital project. And a capital project is handled in one way, "Oh, we're going to get a bond." Well, okay, that's a loan, but it's a capital project. And so you need to be very careful and very fair to the people of this city when you roll out these types of plans. The last thing I'd like to say real quick is, I'm not in favor of naming buildings or anything after government officials.
It's time, sir.
And so I think there should be an ordinance against naming things after government officials.
Appreciate it.
You can gavel me.
I'm not... No, I won't. You were my first, probably not my last. Good evening.
Hi. Laura Janica, 2965 Monger in Livonia. I just got a simple question. A lot of people have been touching on finances and how much a new City Hall is going to cost and things like that, the downtown. I haven't heard anybody talking about the libraries. I've been hearing rumors that we're taking down the Bennett Library. Why are we... Why do we have rumors out there that they're not true? And they're talking... And, you know, Mr. Barr talked about financing a new City Hall. What about financing a new library if that's what's happening here? Why is all this under a cloak of secrecy? Can somebody answer me that in a real way?
I plan to address some things in the council announcements.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can, just make a quick comment. I know that the committee... We all serve on three different committees on the council and have for years. And we chair one of those and vice-chair another one, then we have some subcommittees and public hearings and all the stuff that we all do on this council. And I know that Rob over here has chaired that committee, and they've had, like, 13 or 14 meetings that have been pretty intense. And, you know, I mean, I think when I put on my Facebook that... I did it to a lot of my friends on Facebook, because I live right across the street. I won't tell you where, so you don't egg my house, but anyhow, just joking. But in all seriousness, you know, when my... When we built that house, back when I was in kindergarten, so it was before Abraham Lincoln there, so anyhow, when we built that house, this was going to be a master plan within here as a downtown area. That didn't develop over the years for one reason or the other. So subsequently, I know these guys are really diving into a lot, and I posted a picture of one of the drafts that I had, and they sent a fury over everywhere with folks. And I want to be clear, because there's other pictures, and I tried to pick up a couple of other pictures as well, and just for examples. So there's a lot of work to be done on this yet, and there's a lot of rumor now out there. And so I think we've got to keep an open mind of what we're doing. That's what I've always tried to do, as I've served in any elected capacity. Let's hear the whole story before we pass a lot of judgment, not that it's right or wrong. Certainly, money's tight. I get that. I run a small business. I know how that goes. I employ a lot of people, and I know how that goes. And costs keep going up. They're certainly not going down. So as we look at this great city, let's make sure that we all exchange ideas with Rob and Martha and who else on that committee, Carrie, because they do a great job. And so, you know, I just wanted to clear the air a little bit on that as we move forward, because there's a lot to consider as we look at this piece of property. What do we have? 27 acres, you guys, right here? And, you know, there's some wildlife and things like that that are around and other kinds of things I think we want to preserve and look at and be harmonious with how we're approaching it. This City Hall, I won't date myself, but I had the privilege of going with Ed McNamara and Bob Osborne in those days as a kid. I think I was maybe about 17, 18 years old. My internship was with Ed McNamara, which was really, really a great jumpstart for some of my career. And we went to Ann Arbor, and they had built a brown City Hall. And God bless you, Ed, but you were told not to build the brown City Hall because the ineffectiveness of space and how that cavity shoots that energy right up. So there's a little bit of history there, and it's been a great City Hall, don't get me wrong, but there's also a lot of problems. If you work here during the day, it gets real cold on your legs, on your body, because now that we've put the front doors in, which is very sensible, thank you to the administration, that helps a great deal with some of the issues. But it's also got a leaky roof. It has several other things that are going on. So let's hold our comments so we see what this committee does, because they're working hard at it. They really are, and so is the administration. So let's be cognizant of that, okay? But let's watch our pennies as we do it, and I know they will. Thank you for letting me indulge on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
Hi. Doing good. How about you?
Good.
So my name's Ben Shung, 29737 Mark Lane. So I'm here because I'm not really sure where else to turn for this. So I've actually moved into the city last summer, so I'm a new resident here. But in October of last year, there was a water main break on my street, and so there's a lot of flooding, whatever. And turns out that during the repair for that water main, my sewage line was damaged. So this was in November last year. So I had to sewage back up in my basement, a few inches of sewage water in there. And I filed back in December to try to get this resolved, and I was told to contact... There was a contact at the MM RMA group, and I haven't been able to get hold of them, and it's been about three months. And so I've already had to have water abatement done, which is, you know, like $10,000. And I have to pay out of pocket for it first, and it's been a few months, so it's a bit...
Have you been in contact with anyone at the city?
So there's a clerk that's been helping me out, but she also has had difficulty contacting them. She finally today, actually a little bit earlier today, finally got in contact.
If you don't mind, is there a card right on the... Is there like a communication card up there on the mic? If not, there might be one over here. We'll get you one.
Okay.
And reach out. So that's going to take us to Sarah, who's our office manager.
Okay.
You know, kind of say exactly what you did, and we're going to make sure we follow up. We'll probably get some information to some people that will find out what's the hold up.
Okay. Thank you.
But, yeah.
Okay. I appreciate it. And maybe one other thing is, after the repair on the water main, my street has just been like patches of dirt instead of like concrete, and it's been a few months of that. So everything's kind of really dirty, literally dirty.
And I'm sure, not to steal our city engineer's number, but right now in the winter with frost laws and everything...
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure that that is... And we'll add that to the list tomorrow, but I'm sure that there... You know, usually it's mid-April until the frost laws will, you know, concrete starts rolling.
Okay.
We've had such a heavy... Actually, frost did take hold this year for the first time, I think, in the last five years. So we'll get those answers. You came to the right place. We'll make sure. And then if you have any other questions or concerns, feel free to email council, too. We'll get you some answers.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything other... Any council announcements? Or, I'm sorry, I'm going to go to the audience. No more. I'm going to the council. Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening, everyone. There's a lot I want to say. I'll move this microphone out of the way. I will try to be brief, but also informative. First thing I want to do is thank the council president, Brandon McCullough. I was fortunate enough to do a tour with him. He works, his day job is at Northville Township doing municipal and infrastructure work and facilities and whatnots. And he was kind enough to take me on a tour. They are building a police department, a fire department, a DPW building and a parks building. And really impressive what Northville Township is doing next door to us. Hats off to that board and to the supervisor over there, the mayor, Mr. Abbo. They're, they're doing some really great work. And it was eye-opening, it was, it was interesting to see what they've done and they're actively doing right now. And it excites me because I know this can happen in our community too. And whatever Brandon said, Mr. President says, he's supportive of, of the downtown project, so we're looking forward to that. But we'll keep on ironing out some details and doing things. I'm looking forward to hearing his yes votes in a few months. But with that being said, it was very informative and I appreciate it, sir. I know there was some conversation about conceptual designs you may have seen online and those are just that, conceptual. We've had fifteen meetings now, give or take. Nothing is in secrecy. If anything, if you come to these meetings, you hear me talk forever and trying to rehash all the details and the minutes from those meetings. I, every time I ask for people to attend. So nothing has ever been done in secrecy and I reject that thought or that premise at every single instance. We do everything on the city council to get people active, engaged and motivated to attend these meetings. We want more people to come to the meetings because there's so much information shared and I could talk for two hours about the different variations and conceptual designs and phases and I can just go on and on and on. If you're interested in attending these meetings and learning more about the Civic Center campus, please attend. They are usually about seven PM. The next one will be March 12th at seven PM here in City Hall. Sarah Kasperch was nice enough to get this auditorium scheduled for that night so we can have tons of space here. And if anybody wants to attend and look at those conceptual designs and learn more about the funding and what options there are to the city council, to the administration. And if you talk to any of the council members, it's something that keeps us up. We all talk about it, we all argue about it, we all think about different, you know, pros and cons, as we should, because that's why we're here. And the department heads are working hard, the administration is working hard. And if you want to participate in that process, we would love nothing more than to see you here. I want to talk about some of the amounts that have already been approved. The city council has entered into, we've approved nine contracts. And again, there's a lot of information in these contracts, but I want to briefly touch on those. So the city council's approved nine contracts around the Civic Center campus. And our finance director was nice enough to, Debbie Lichtenberg, she's been great, really great with the numbers and sending that over to council, keeping us updated on what we've spent and what we approved and what we spent. So nine contracts, really quickly, I want to read them into the minute so they are on the record because again, we're not secretive about anything. We want to get this information out there. And there's a website called LivoniaBuilt.org that has all sorts of information on there that we encourage residents to please follow along. We approved owner's representative for Plant Moran Real Point in the amount of one point six-five million dollars, one point six-five million dollars. And thus far, we've spent three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars on that contract. We've approved OHM, excuse me, for architectural services. OHM for their master plan civil engineering portion, we approved nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We've not spent any money with them yet. For our land surveying consultant, Spalding D. Decker, we approved sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So far, we've spent fifty-four thousand two hundred dollars with them. Our traffic study consultant, Spalding D. Decker, we've approved seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars. We've not spent any money with them. Our architectural services for City Hall, which is H E D, that's just a City Hall component of this to design the City Hall. It was, and master planning, so that's master planning for the entire Civic Center sites and then design architectural services for just City Hall. We approved one million eight hundred sixty-four thousand fifty dollars. And so far, we've spent a hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, a hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Architectural services for the police department, Hobbs and Black Architects, we approved one point six-five-eight million dollars. We've spent nothing with them just yet. Construction management to build the City Hall, they're like a general contractor essentially, that is Frank Rewald and Sons. We approved one point five million dollars, one point five sixteen million dollars. Property line easement title drawings, we approved Spalding D. Decker in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars. We've not spent any money with them. And then technology consulting services, Plant Moran, P L L C, we approved three hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars. We've not spent any with them. So the grand total of the projected commitment that we as city council have approved is eight million one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And yeah, and we've spent five hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars out of that eight point one million dollars. So the point of reading that into the record is, one, to let the administration know that the city council's watching. The city council is constantly talking about finances. Our vice president, Mrs. Tashnik, she is the committee chair for our finance committee. Those meetings are open to the public. And again, we encourage residents to attend those finance committee meetings chaired by the council vice president. So the administration knows we are constantly asking for updates on the expenditures and the contracts we've approved and where they're at. The second thing to talk about is we're not going to spend all the money until there's certain phases of construction that will happen here. So the fact that we spent, you know, X amount of dollars for architectural services for the police department, we've not gotten there yet, so we're not spending that money. And we talk about funding sources and financing and how we got to that two point five million dollar surplus, for example, that's money that the city has in our budget and the city's going to spend one way or another. City Hall is falling apart. In one of the fourteen meetings we've had over the last year and a half, Plant Moran Real Point, a real estate consultant, they did a space needs analysis and essentially they looked at the size of this building. And again, at all these meetings, we went into, in very in-depth as to why this building is no longer functional for not only the taxpayers and the residents here, but for the fact that how much money this building is costing us over the next thirty, over the next ten years, we're projecting it'll cost the city about thirty-nine million dollars to upkeep this building and to do facility enhancements to this building. So then I ask myself, am I in good conscience going to spend that kind of money on a building that's falling apart, that is way too big, that is five stories tall, that should never have built in this kind of condition, that is empty half the time? Why would I spend taxpayer money, roughly thirty-nine million dollars over the next ten years, when we could go build a new City Hall for a smaller portion of that hopefully and something that is more manageable that will last a hundred years? Those are the conversations I have with myself. So when we talk about, do we save that two point five million dollars, do we give it back to the taxpayers? I'd love nothing more than to give money back to the taxpayers. But I also want to spend the taxpayer money wisely. And one way or another, it's going to be spent and how do we spend that the best way for our taxpayers? So those are a few things I want to touch on and I do appreciate my colleagues. We've had so many of these meetings, we're going to have more. And again, the next one is March 12th. I could keep going on and on and on about really great information, but I can feel the eyes looking at me right now, so I'm going to end my remarks.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have a couple of things also. I, first of all, I want to, there's Carla, there. I wanted to address the SPN Survivors Moving With Moose kickoff that's coming up this week. You know, this encourages people to be active and to support their mental health. And I think this is such an important topic that affects really all of us. And once again, this is my third year, I'm assembling a team and I encourage anyone to join us. The team name is Livonia City Council and Friends. So last year was just the city council, but I'm encouraging friends. I know Clerk Miller just told me before the meeting that she's going to get her department to join us as well, so they can be some of our friends. And all of you are welcome to join us as well. So anyone in the audience, anyone out there in TV land, the millions that watch us, right?
Only if you want to be on the winning team, all right?
The winning team, yes, exactly. So you can join our team, you just have to go to spnsurvivors.org/moose. I know Carla's got some handouts that she can pass out and join us. Just look for the, you know, when it says search for a team, if you type in Livonia City Council, it should pop up. I also posted the information on my council Facebook page. You can always shoot me an email at mtaschnik@livonia.gov and I will send you the link as well. So lots of ways, no excuses not to be on the team. Yes, the winning team, of course, right? Is how we go. One other thing I do want to piggyback just a little bit on Mr. Donavich's comments. And maybe this is semantics, I consider it more of a city center project than a downtown. And like I said, maybe that's semantics. And the project is ambitious, this is going to be a transformative initiative. It promises to enhance our community, I think significantly. You know, we are going to have to have a new City Hall. As Mr. Donavich said, the cost to repair this one, it's, there's no point at this point. We need a revamped police headquarters. The renovations needed be happening to our fire stations. You know, this is a commitment to improving public service and public safety around here. The potential for change in our library system and the development of then eventually retail and housing options, that's undoubtedly going to enrich the lives of our residents. I do commend the administration as well for their dedication on this long-term project. This is not something that's going to happen overnight. But they've actively involved the council in this process. And like Mr. Donavich said, we've had at least fifteen meetings. I feel like every other day I'm going to a Capitol Outlay meeting, but you know, this needs to happen. And you know, I commend Mr. Donavich for his leadership on this, he's done a great job. There's definitely a concerted effort to gather input and foster collaboration on this project. This is not a one-person project by any means. I'm actually the newly appointed vice chair of the committee with Mr. Jolly's departure to go be the judge or something, I don't know. But I'm eager to contribute to these, you know, to these, something like that, I think. And of course, council member Bazinski is with us on that. While the three of us compose the committee, we are not the end-all-be-all and all council members are invited and actually encouraged to attend these meetings. So it's not just the three of us. I do want to emphasize though, the importance of the public in this. While recent draft images were shared on social media and they sparked conversation, I guess that's an understatement, but yeah, they do not capture the vision we are working towards at all. You know, transparency is crucial and I appreciate the community's engagement. However, I want to urge you all to know that these are just renderings that are still evolving and what was shared was not complete and in my opinion, doesn't really represent what we're going for or where the project even stands. So as Mr. Donavich said, our next Capitol Outlay Committee meeting will be held here in the auditorium for the public to learn more about the project. I would hope everyone who's interested comes and attends. It's going to be a collaborative process. No final decisions have been made yet. And together, we can shape a city center that truly reflects the desires and needs of our residents. So March 12th, seven PM, you can get your steps in for Moving With Moose by walking here that night and we'll see what we've got. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Bazinski, and then I'll go to Councilwoman Toye.
Yes, so you know, I won't make this a Capitol Outlay meeting by going over everything that's already been discussed, but I will say, just on the point of transparency, that since 2021, I've been providing commentary-free summaries of city council meetings and committee meetings for Vote Run Serve Livonia. So you could search old meetings and find, you know, updates for things that are happening in real time. I also do the same as a council member for my city council Facebook page. I do highlight of, of, you know, the most relevant talking points. And I, when we did the Capitol Outlay summary, I didn't include the renderings because I felt like they were so far removed from where we're going to end up going. You know, they were really, they were placeholders, you know. I viewed them a lot of like playing with my kids and putting blocks in place to kind of help us council members visualize what's the potential for this space? What are, are, are contract partners and the administration looking to move forward to? We have a long way to go before we get a project lined up that we would be voting on. So I do want to just state that. And on the point of transparency and engagement, please come to these, these meetings. We love having a full room here. I also do monthly coffee hours to help again with the transparency and accessibility of government. You know, it was mentioned in public comments about the libraries. I feel like I talk about the libraries a lot, but my next coffee hour, always at, almost always at the library. It's Saturday, March 22nd at 11:00 AM. The library director, Kristen Edson, will be my guest, so I do a regular council update and then she will present on things happening at the library. We do a Q and A, so anyone who has questions, welcome to bring them. On April 26th, the mayor will be at my coffee hour to talk about her vision for this space and area. The public is welcome to come and ask questions. And then on May 31st, we're actually not at the library because the library is so busy, they didn't have space that month, we'll be at Newburgh Village too. And my guest will be the candidates for city council and I see, I think, five of them in the audience tonight. So mark your guys' calendar for March 31st at 11:00 AM. If you'd like to talk to the public, public, please come, you can meet the candidates and they'll have an opportunity to speak about why they're running. So that is all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toye.
Day, Mr. Chair. On another note, and another committee, I chair seniors, families and the environment is one of my committees here at the city. And we are going to meet next Monday, March the third, at, let's see, seven o'clock upstairs, second floor. That's the chambers, the council chambers, that is. We're hoping to have some people and obviously residents that are concerned. We're going to be discussing senior Newburgh Village. We are expanding that, we have a lot of property over there. And with a huge senior population that we have in Livonia, it behooves us to get some input. If you know anybody that lives in one of our great senior facilities, would you please let them know and offer them a ride over? Because some don't drive in the dark anymore. But we'd like to have some real dialogue going on there. I know a couple of people from the audience last meeting two weeks ago expressed interest in that. And we're going to be looking at that and we, we just heard we have a new director. So we want to make sure that, you know, we keep, keep that dialogue open as well and get a good plan. Today's senior, I'd like to think of us as a little different than yesterday's senior, not that they're bad or good or indifferent, it's just they have a little bit different attitude. Some of them even have retirements and are quite wealthy. No, I'm teasing. They, they want different things. They want a better playground, no. But they, you know, they want different types of forms of things for seniors. And I think we got to be cognizant of that as this council proceeds in the future. We're also going to invite Parks and Rec in and we're going to discuss disabilities. As many of you know, my brother was disabled his entire life, so I'm very sensitive to that issue. And we want to see what we're doing at Parks and Rec and to make different things viable. And I know others, some of my other colleagues are sensitive to that issue as well. And that kind of rolls into seniors because some seniors have mobility problems, as we know, or, or don't. We also are going to look at transportation. We have a heavy agenda. Transportation has been somewhat of an issue within our city for seniors, for others, families, et cetera. And we're going to kind of look at that transportation. We have a new transportation person as well. So we're right on that cusp of getting information out and information in. That's at seven o'clock, March the third. Please come, we'd love to have you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
And others. And oh, if I may, Carrie Bazinski is our vice chair, Scott Morgan also serves on that committee. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else from council? All right, let me, I guess, address some of the fun that I, and I'll, I'll keep this brief, but I just kind of want to touch base. I, I did make a post last week and it, and it did very well. It went crazy, to say the least. You know, one thing, I'm an analytics guy, I didn't think it was going to go that crazy. But guys, here's, here's how it went. And I, I want to start by saying, when Councilman Donavich brings up that we've had, you know, up to fifteen committee meetings, we have. There's been a ton of work that went into this. I don't want to discount this at all. We've been putting a lot of work and effort into it. But right now, we're starting to get to that point where we need to start looking to you guys and saying, hey, is this something that you would be interested in? The timeline is, is very fast. So obviously, if there's a ballot initiative, it's going to be in the summer, which means that city council, yours truly up here, will have to vote to put that request on the ballot. Us, not the fourth floor, not administration, city council. And so, you know, if you look at April, as I just said, our next meeting, you know, we're already moving into March. And so that doesn't give us a huge amount of time to share a ton of stuff and basically stop a firestorm of that post that would have happened if that vote would have taken place regardless. So everything kind of worked exactly how I hoped and thought it would, it's just creating awareness. Could I have included the entire packet? For sure. But it is, for the record, it is very high level and preliminary. But after that meeting, I was taken back as, as similar to probably a lot of people were. And so I look at that and, and that's a planned unit, that's a PUD, it's a planned unit development, the way it's, it sits. And I know when we spoke about this in Vision 21, and I'm not discounting everybody that was part of that process back, I think, in 2018, but a lot has changed. Listen, I'm all good for referencing that and using it as almost kind of like a Bible going forward, however, things have changed. The world's gotten different. We went through a pandemic, you know? And so I think we have to take a look at it. We can use that as a measuring stick, but there's also things that we need to do, in my opinion, to change some things. And so I think March 12th, instead of maybe having two to three people from the public, I think we're going to have a packed auditorium. And it's not, it shouldn't be one of those things where you guys come up and we have a screaming, you know, contest. It should be something where we have collaboration and, and looking for answers and ideas. Because guys, we might be council members, we don't know everything, you know? We're open to things. I think the first time anybody stops saying that they want to learn more, you give up. You always want to be innovative. So I did that post because for me personally, I was so taken back by that plan because, you know, you got a plan that's showing, now it's just showing it's high level, you know, ninety percent of our city property that would either go into a land lease or something else or even being sold. You do see the Bennett Library do, it does move in that, in that rendition, so that's not fake news. It also shows that Larry Neese Hazel Memorial Park would move. So these are all questions and like I said, nothing's in stone. But when we were discussing the downtown back in my early years on council, probably much as the time as former Councilman Barr was on council at the time too, it was presented to us more of the corner. You know, the collaboration with potentially Livonia Public Schools and making a full downtown and not a planned unit development. Planned unit development is looking at the one corner. And I think at that time, if I had a vision in it, it would be build the municipal campus that we can be proud of. That's our home. I always, I'm a hockey guy, you guys hear it all the time, that's, that's, that's my ice, that's my home ice. You know, Five and Farmington is Livonia's home and has been. And so I don't think that this idea is bad, but I do feel that if we're going to ask the voters to, you know, potentially pay a lot of money out of their pockets, then it should be a citizen-involved project and it should be something that reflects what, one, the citizens want and what they want in that area. And so like I said, we're going to have one meeting on the 12th. The communications, it's been, it's been decent, but a lot of times when we have these meetings, there's nothing against Councilman Donavich, he's running the meetings, right? But the administration will almost bring it up as almost, instead of a tabletop exercise looking for input, it's more of a, hey, this is where we're at, right? And so I'd like to have a chance to look at it. Personally, I think there should be an action committee that consists of public safety, administration, community leaders, nonprofit leaders, I don't care if there's 10 to 15 people on that. There should be a steering committee that throws this out, that can carry this torch and sell the story, not just relying on our governmental affairs director as it was presented to us. So again, I'm just trying to be transparent, and it wasn't, you know, if I could have posted 20 more slides, I don't think it would have made any difference. I'm sorry if, I know I took some hits that, you know, I'm trying to throw a fast one, I promise you I'm not. I want everybody, as I said, I put it in there, I want butts in seats, I want citizens to have input, and at least for me, that's what I thought we signed up to do. So as we go forward, a lot of people have opinions in the city, and I expect to see the butts in the seats on March 12th. So, you know, just as anyone said, I'm not crying over spilled milk, I'm not blaming, I'm not saying where we were, I just want to see this plan collaborate, collaborative with the population of our city. That's it. It's not much to ask for, and if anybody wants to debate me on that, feel free to call me up and let's have a debate. Other than that, Councilwoman Toye already touched base on our senior citizens at the committee meeting, and then obviously on 312, we have that. Other than that, I've got nothing else, council. And if anybody has anything else, I want to move on to the next item, which is reports from the mayor and other city officials, and this is in reference to our noble. Do we have anybody from the administration to do the report out? From the mayor's office? Anybody from the mayor's office?
One.
One?
Two.
Twice? All right. With that being said, guys, I'm going to touch base on it, so please, so we did receive correspondence, and I'm just going to kind of run through a very high level. I'll actually read it. "As you are aware, funds are not currently available to be put in, to be put, to put the Noble Library structure into usable condition, resulting in the mold damage created by water intrusion in the building. The property was vacated in October of 2019 and declared to be unsafe." Basically, if, I'm not going to belabor everybody with this, but I want to just kind of Cliff Notes this for you, is, one, I was hoping that someone from the mayor's office would be here to speak on the memo that they created, so take that in reference. When we had our last meeting, there was a motion for $20,000, and I can tell you, looking through the minutes, there was, we did get a legal interpretation from Mr. Fisher, which was appreciated. Supposedly now, we still have to make another motion to now spend the $20,000. So that motion that we had months ago, it wasn't fully dedicated to anything specific, even though I think I made it very clear that $5,000 was going to, and I just want to state it for the record for the, probably the 15th time, it was $5,000, because you've probably heard a lot of misinformation, to do a specific structural analysis, that's it. I just wanted to make sure the structure wasn't going to collapse from the foundation and the footings. And I could tell you, with my subject matter expertise, five grand is enough to make that happen with a stamp. That's all I was asking for. There was five grand for carrying cost, and listen, anybody that is in local government, that's already there. So we have in our general ledger accounts, there's usually general building maintenance, and the city right now, guaranteed, probably has a general lump sum amount to do all the buildings. So that five grand that we were going to allocate is pretty much always there, it was just a formality to basically patch holes in the roof as needed, kind of almost on perfume on a pig type of atmosphere why we're dealing with this. I have learned that there's about two feet of water in the basement currently, and it's not being pumped out. So, you know, when we did ask that securing the building against unauthorized entry and vandalism, that was one of the things that they gave us something, making sure that the bleeding stops in the building is clearly not being considered, because there's two feet of water in the basement when you could get a sump pump back online and move that out. The second issue, it was just, like I said, the carrying costs, and then if everybody remembers that one evening at Sheldon, I, the $10,000 was to go towards conceptuals and design for the entire site plan for all of Sheldon, including the current Noble facility, to then go after grants from our governmental affairs director, who, that is part of the job description. So we did waste three months, and I do apologize last meeting, because I think my face was bright red when we were talking about it, and I'll be completely honest, I was deflated, and it wasn't the greatest news in the world, because we were just asking to have a resolution that all council voted 7-0 to enact. So we did get a, an idea that I guess we would have to make a motion to specifically do this. And so with that, I mean, I can go through this all, guys, I'm going to share this out, probably even via social media, this interpretation, so you guys can take your time and read it. But if I may, I did have a question, if I could, before I go to you, before I go back to council and to the audience. Mr. Fisher, I just have a general question. So in the world that I know, we have general ledger accounts, and if you don't have an answer for this, I just want to get it on the record. So we, city council and all the departments will be characterized, it's just for accounting codes, so our department number is 101, right? So we have an account that says capital outlays-dash minor, I don't know what it was used for, but if council allocates the money, and we were to sift it to this specific general ledger and follow the procurement rules, the policies that the city has in place, why can't council spend those funds? Or can they? Because every other department does. We have, you know, and those have elected leaders in place. So, listen, if you don't have an answer now, I just wanted to state it on the record that if we have that ability, the next meeting, what I would ask my colleagues to do is move that $20,000 and procure and spend the funds, because it's just is what it is. Yes?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President, and I'm not sure if our city attorney is ready to answer that question. I voted to allocate $20,000 for a specific purpose, which was Noble Building. It's no longer a library, the library commissioned, decommissioned it a library a few years ago now. With that being said, I'm completely fine with spending $20,000 for some sort of study. It's no secret, I think, that a 16,000 square foot building like Noble that is in disrepair is a lost cause, and the building should have been demoed years ago, but if the council wants to spend $20,000, now, I don't know what we can do, how far does $20,000 take us? I mean, I just got done reading off nine different contracts that we've approved, some of them were around design and architectural work and master planning, I don't think $20,000 scratches of service to get a sufficient site plan. Mr. Davis, he presented a new master plan, site plan for Sheldon Park, which was really impressive. I was there along with Councilwoman Kerry Bazinski, it was a really impressive plan, something around the tune of $5 million that the Parks and Rec Department is working on and enhancing Sheldon Park, and I'm really excited to see that hopefully here in the next year or so, maybe even sooner. With that being said, that's a really beautiful plan, and I imagine it took a lot of money to do it, and I just don't know if $20,000 would accomplish a plan for a dilapidated and functionally obsolete building like the Noble Building. With that being said, if we want to put $20,000 into the fund, which is already in the fund, if we're going to make a motion that the administration spend that money for some sort of investigative work, like OHM doing structural needs or some real estate consultant going there and telling us that it's going to cost us $10 million to repair, which is probably what it'll cost somewhere in that ballpark. With that being said, I'm good with it. I do wonder, I mean, I imagine council legally can spend money, but I don't know if it's a good practice or not, I'd hope that the administration, I mean...
Well, if I may.
Just let me talk through this, you know, if we can, you know, if we can spend, hey, we want to spend $20,000 for, you know, some sort of structural investigative work, we've already made the motion, put the money in the fund.
Let me just, if I may.
Now, I think we do have to make a motion, though, to spend that money, though.
We do. So here, guys, here's my issue, and honestly, I'm not sure I want to give it back to the administration, because the administration, no offense, didn't listen to any words we had at this dais to spend that money. And this is what I ended up getting, I want to just finish this at the very end. "A long-term solution would require replacing the aging roof on the building and/or attempting to waterproof the basement walls. Is unlikely that $20,000, that the $20,000 the council has allocated per council resolution for council initiatives related to Noble slash Sheldon Park issues would pay for either of these remedies. The administration is prepared to send a request for proposals to determine the cost of conducting the building condition assessment and to investigate the cost of re-roofing and/or waterproofing." The reason I bring this up, people, is we already asked for this months ago, months ago, and nothing. And honestly, at this point, you know, if it goes back to the administration, that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, we've been talking about this, everybody's been saying, hey, it's been stalemate, and nothing's happened on this building, and for the record, honestly, 20 grand, at least the 20 grand of the history and experience I have in this field, I can assure you, I can get design drawings, very high level, that we could go for grants, and I could have a building assessment list from a stamped engineer done. And so that's why I really would like our city attorney to look at this, so that, you know, I'll just handle with council's support on this, if it is possible to procure it. Obviously, we'd bring it forth here, and even if it's under our procurement threshold, I'd be happy to ask council to vote on, you know, the measure, just as we would do anything else.
I've got a point of order request to our city attorney, I want to make sure we're following Robert's rules of order. Are we still talking under, under...
There's no resolutions.
Yeah, are we, but I want to make sure, point of order, that we're still allowed to talk about this right now, under the motion, or under the administrative response?
So, right, so we, in terms of what the discussion that we're having right now, it's directed from an initial question, it doesn't have to be about a motion on the floor. And so in terms of answering your question, as it relates to the specific funds and line items that we're talking, that you referenced earlier, I'd have to circle back to you on that and talk with our director of finance about how that procedure works. In terms of sort of the general lay of the land, and to give a little bit of background on the issue, the initial motion and the motion that we have on record was one related to the budgetary process, so allocating that $20,000 in the budget, which is a different process than directing the expenditure of that $20,000. So just like when any department requests a line item in the budget, and it's granted by council, that doesn't give them the right to immediately expend that money, they still have to bring back contracts to council for approval unless they fall under the council threshold. So in this instance, I believe the memo from the administration was requesting a specific direction via council motion or resolution for the expenditure of those funds.
And I can go back to the minutes, I'm not trying to refute it, but anybody that was here clearly knows what those were listed, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the administration to conduct, and I don't know the specific terminology here, but to conduct an analysis on the building for structural building analysis, engineering analysis, you know.
Stamps.
Yeah, it's got to be stamped.
Oh, support. Well, I thought you were going to finish, I'll support, but I wanted you to finish.
President Mayor, so I struggle making this motion, because I really truly believe we are throwing money away. However, with that, because the building again is a lost cause, we've had OHM conduct analysis on this building, we went down this road multiple times and spent a ton of money on this building.
That's true.
With that being said, if we're going to spend $20,000 to prove that the building is going to cost, again, $10 million to fix, or just continue to give us all the data that shows that this building is a lost cause, I'm willing to spend that money. I'm not willing to spend money on fixing the building, again, I think we're just throwing money away at that point, but in terms of my motion tonight, as opposed to just continuing to talk about it, and I agree with our city attorney's opinion here, is I'm okay with making that motion to put money into, again, some sort of structural analysis, engineer analysis, something like that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Bazinski.
Yeah. So this is something that I brought up at our last meeting, the, this area of the city is personally important to me, I know it's important to a lot of residents. What is happening with the building is also important, as council president mentioned, there's water in the basement right now, which, you know, this is a city asset, this is a city obligation and responsibility for us to maintain, you know, property that taxpayers have invested in. So I really find it so incredibly frustrating that the administration is letting water sit there, knowing that it is just harming the building more, and they're not even willing to talk to us about it and present us with an alternative vision or a plan of what they want to do. Quite frankly, I do support the council president's interest in having the money put to council for allocation, but in lieu of that, I support Councilman Donavich's motion to instruct the administration to get a structural analysis for this. I'd like to put a time on it, though, I'd like to give them 30 or 60 days, because they continually string us along when it comes to these issues, and I'd like for us to say, we want a plan.
60 days.
I, you know, I know we all have waited a long time, so I think 60 days, though, is the most appropriate, there are a lot of moving pieces with the city.
With a report.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I want a structural analysis with a time date, and then I want a report, I want them to provide us with what their plan and vision is for this building, because, one, it is not safe or responsible for us to leave a building in poor shape, I mean, with, I mean, if you, when you read this letter, it really sounds like it's also possibly a fire hazard, because it's close to electric boxes and there's live water there. That worries me, and frustrates me so much, I have no words, quite frankly, but I would like if we could amend the motion to include some very specific language.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to amend my original motion to put a 60-day time limit on there, that the administration get that proposal back to the city council.
Well, let me specify, the report.
My motion is for, to spend the $20,000 to hire a contractor, that's what my motion's about, my motion's not about a report, my motion specifically is to hire some sort of structural engineer, real estate consultant, you know, engineer consultant that will give us a report to show the building. So if that's a report, I think we're kind of playing with words here, if that's some sort of real estate report, structural report.
Like having the documents for review in 60 days.
Yes, but again, my motion is to spend $20,000 for the building, not to patch holes, not to pump water out, that is what my motion is for.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, is the mayor, who had, who supported?
Bazinski.
Kerry did.
Kerry, perfect. Councilwoman Toye.
If I may, I think, I think that's part of the problem with this discussion, which is healthy, but I don't think it was real clear, and I know, Brandon, you have been right on this, and Kerry, you two have led that charge, and I want to support you any way I can on it, and I commend Rob for coming in, because he's had some problems with it, and that's how we have all worked together, which is very admirable, but I think we've got to be very clear on this motion.
Yeah, I do, too.
That way, nobody comes back to say, well, you know, yeah, really, you really didn't specify, and, you know, I mean, because they get a lot of requests, and so do we, so, you know, I commend all of you for that, I'm not just trying to say that, but, come on, let's be specific.
And I think, Mr. Carter, you, like, if we could, just to make sure that you're good with this motion, if I may?
Mr. President, with it being asked, what is the mechanism for this to go to a study to continue the conversation? Because right now, we're making a motion, we'd take a vote for this motion right now to regular, they would codify this and send it to law. To maybe the city attorney, is there a way to send this to, to study, the following study, so it gives us time to really get that verbiage down of what council's intent is here?
I won't.
Not based on the motion that's currently on the floor, you could make a second motion to have this topic heard at the next study session, a replacement motion, essentially.
Sure.
I have a question. So I have a question. So the memo we got, we received, said that the administration is prepared to send a request for proposals to determine the cost. Are you saying, is your motion having administration just pick a company and have them do it, or go out for bids to come back to show us?
And if I, if I may, so, guys, here's the thing, and I think, and please correct me, but I think, is our threshold $25,000?
20.
Before it has to come to council?
Correct.
So, again, going back to that budget request, it was five grand structural assessment that can be done without council resolution, with the appropriation of the current money that's in there, with probably a means of a department head signing off.
It could accept that the money is currently allocated towards council initiatives, so the department head is council in this instance.
Okay. Well, for that, I mean, we do have a motion on the table, I just would like to specify for the record, we do have the 60 days, we are asking for a stamped and sealed report, not just a opinion, we want it stamped and sealed.
And not a memo.
And not a memo, on the exact foundation issues. Everything else, listen, I don't, I don't need a mold report, because we have a mold report, we know there's mold in the building, I just want to know if that building is structurally, if it can structurally be fixed, that's the biggest thing. In my opinion, if the structure's gone, we're in trouble, but anything else is building materials and everything else, so. When they did the Ford building down, down in, you know, in Corktown, they did their due diligence monstrously to fix that building, and they went in and conducted all this, and by the way, I think there was more than two feet of water in that basement. So I just want to make sure that that's there, and then if we can, if you could still review that to see if we can move that money into the GL, and I'll follow every procedure and protocol.
Absolutely.
To Councilman Schill's point, yes, that is my intent, to follow what the administration's or memo asking us to spend that money for that report, so I'm doing what the administration asked council to do, we approved to allocate dollars, but we never spent them, we never told them what to do with that money, and they asked us, they explicitly said in the memo, if we want to do the report, to tell them to do that.
And does your motion include going to study?
And does your motion include going to study, then, to look at this, to put it into study?
No, I'm just ready to take a vote on it. We've talked about this over and over and over again, for three years now, four years, five years now.
So when it comes back, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good.
When the report comes back from administration, will that go to a study meeting, then?
Good.
Or it lives in committee of the whole. It could be called up at any time.
Honestly, just as they gave us the memo, it could be a report from the mayor and other city officials. It could be added anytime. But, I mean, my biggest concern right now is, are we just kicking the can down the road? Because something just, you know, something like this, a structural assessment, can be done in two weeks by somebody. So, Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, I'd have to say that this has got more convoluted as time has went on and just listening to everybody talk. You know, I mean, I'm still not clear exactly what we'd even be really voting on at this point. This is, you know, you want a stamp, he wants an assessment. The bottom line is, is what he put out there is just basically an assessment that's going to be done within 60 days. And I'm still not quite sure what that's going to do. As the other council members had indicated, that they know there's water in the basement, they know there's electricity, there's a lot of issues with this building, including mold, leaky roof, all this other stuff. What is this $20,000 really going to get us? And I mean, is this a political agenda? I mean, are you, what are we really addressing here? We already know this, this building is dilapidated, and we're just throwing, we're throwing good money after bad at this point. That's what it sounds like. And that you, or maybe not you specifically, but somebody wants to prove to someone that we went and redid this and took a look at something that we already know is a problem. So at this point, I mean, I'm a no vote on this. I cannot justify spending $20,000, no matter where this money comes from, to see another report that says this building is dilapidated. Ridiculous. But if you're specifically looking at a stamp from an engineer that says this building can be saved at this cost, that's what I want to hear out of your mouth.
That's what I've said.
What exactly what you want?
Councilman Morgan, I've said that about 30 times.
Because it's so convoluted, I don't know. Yeah, but that's not what he said.
I get that. So, listen.
So, if we're looking at something, I want to know exactly what I'm voting on and not have you interjecting, and then someone else interjecting on what they want, and then the motion being something else that has nothing to do with what we're trying to accomplish.
And what is that?
So, well, you want a stamp. That's not what he said. You want a stamp from a certified engineer. He did not say that.
Listen, I don't want to get into a debate here, but re-watch this meeting and see if I said that.
I would like to know exactly what I'm voting on. That's all I'm asking.
He made the motion. I asked if I could have a general ledger, because the administration keeps dragging their feet for the tune of almost four years.
And I'm not saying they're not. I'm just telling you, I want to know exactly what we're voting on.
I'm not doing this for any political agenda. This is a building in our city, in the south end, that we've literally let rot for five years.
President?
No, and if I may finish, I want to see something. I want a stamped, I want a stamped inspection from a structural engineer, everybody, a stamped inspection that shows, and please, just don't make me gavel this, a stamped inspection that shows the foundation, which is located in the bottom level, if it is good or bad, yes or no. I don't need a full building inspection on how many hurricane clips, or what is under code, or this. I want to know if the structure is dilapidated and ready to fall. If it is not, then it can be saved. And listen, right now, when we're doing all this, and we talked about the downtown Livonia, we're doing a lot of due diligence on that, but we can't spend maybe five grand. If anybody wants to debate me, I'll be happy to go get estimates, because that's what I do for a living. Do you want me to get estimates? I can do that. That's why I'm asking our city attorney, if I, since the administration can't handle this, that's been on the minutes, specifically how to spend $20,000, then I'll do it myself, as long as it's available in the charter, and I'll get it done in a week, with balancing everything else that I do, including my part-time job is doing this. I can do that in two weeks, because it's taken almost four years to get done. So I wanted to let everybody know on the record that that's what we're gonna do there. So that's my motion. I will not be supporting anything that doesn't say specifically foundations and a structural analysis with a stamp. Because right now, I might get a stamp from Michael's, write this, if I don't specify it.
Mr. President?
I'm going to Councilman Buzinski, and then I'll go back.
Is there a substitute, point of order, is there a substitute motion on the floor?
He's got the gavel.
Okay. So, as the maker of the motion, we are at a regular meeting, we need to move the vote. I asked for, the administration presented us with a letter, request for proposals to determine the cost of conducting a building condition assessment, and to investigate, et cetera, et cetera. That was my motion earlier, on the floor.
I'll offer a substitute motion.
Okay, so wait.
Can you?
Councilman Buzinski, what is your?
She's the supporter of the original.
No, she can. But you obviously have to.
I'll make a substitute motion that specifically states.
I wasn't done there, Mr. President. I wasn't done talking.
He wasn't done talking.
All right, then, let me go to Councilman Morgan. The floor is yours.
Mr. President, so in this case.
There's a motion on the floor, Mr. President. We need to hear the motion first.
But we're debating the current motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
In this case, why don't you pass the gavel, and you make the specific motion, and then you get it back. That way, we know exactly what you want for a secondary motion.
I'm passing this. Vice President, may I have the floor?
Mr. Morgan, are you done?
I am done, thank you.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to allocate the $20,000 that we already approved to conduct a specific structural assessment of the Noble facility, stamped by a approved, licensed engineer and structural engineer, one of the two. You can have them both.
Support.
Motion by McCullough, support by Buzinski.
So, again, if everybody heard me, so that when two months comes down, and they say, hey, I gotta figure out what you meant by structural, then we can figure that out. Councilman Buzinski.
She's a jerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. Listen.
Councilmember Buzinski?
And can we include the deadline of the 60 days in your motion?
Yes, yes. And I want the stamped sealed report within 60 days.
Mr. President, point of order, don't we have to vote to actually substitute the motion, Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, no, I'm just adding, I'm adding something to the.
We have to vote to substitute the motion first.
Hold on. Okay, everybody, hold on. We have a substitute motion on the table, made by McCullough, supported by Buzinski. Take the vote on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
No.
President McCullough?
Aye.
Councilwoman Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilwoman Schill? Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
And Vice President Tashnik?
Aye, motion carries. Now, council, I will go back to you for comments. Councilmember Buzinski?
To my colleague's point about why are we doing this, we're doing this because we've been asking the administration for guidance and leadership and answers and communication regarding this building for literally years, but at least this past year that I've been on council. And we've gotten nothing, including after public dialogue and outreach to the administration following the last meeting. So, the reason why we're doing this, it's not a political ploy. It is, quite frankly, desperate plea for action, for something that residents have begged for, for years, and have worked really hard to raise awareness about this issue, to ask the city to do something. And that is why I think that it's really important, and I'm glad we were able to find some specific language of what we need. Because the question is so much, can the building be saved? Do we need to look at alternative actions that could preserve this community space in a different way? And having a foundation analysis will allow us to know, really, it'll tell us a lot. And hopefully, it will be able to provide some clearer pathway forward, or at least clearer pathway forward than what we currently have. Because right now, there's more questions than answers, and a lot of things are unclear. And I hope that this motion can allow us some more, you know, answers. I don't know.
Did you have something?
Mrs. Schill?
Let's have a question. On this, on this motion, Mr. McCullough, President McCullough, does this mean that you're going to pick the company? The administration's going to pick the company?
Well, as of right now, if I may.
Yes.
Just to have this motion passed, but I'm still asking our city attorney to see if I can, if we have the ability to allocate that. I'd make sure that we have enough to streamline this process and get some answers. So that would, I mean, if administration can give us a timeline within the 60 days, I'd be open to that. But if we have any delays, then I still want to see if we could spend those funds.
Understood.
And it's up to $20,000, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Councilmember Toy?
Councilwoman Schill makes a great point, because, no offense, in your motion, you don't have the 60 days, and some of those particulars, unless I'm mistaken.
We did. No, we did.
We did it?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Yes.
Any other comments from council? All right, are you ready to move on? Yeah. We did, we voted. Yeah. All right, would you like, well, we got the consent. I'll do this. You can have it back. I'm gonna pass the gavel back to President McCullough.
To clarify.
We voted.
We voted to substitute the motion.
Oh, give it back. Sorry. Yes, we do, actually. Yeah. All right, we have to go back to now the motion. Does anyone from the audience have any comments to make?
No.
I forgot we had the original. I got so many.
Two minutes on.
Welcome to the circus.
Hey, thanks.
Good evening. Name and address. You know the drill.
Wow, a couple of things. Just because there's water in the basement doesn't mean the walls are leaking. I mean, I just can't believe people don't understand that. I have a sump pump at my house. When the power goes out, I have water in my basement. It doesn't mean the foundation is compromised in any way. Secondly, how can you let the administration, moving forward, pick people that are going to look at the structure? They've ignored the structure for four years. They cherry pick people they want to give them the answer they're looking for. Please, you guys take control. You control it. You, someone, other than plant Moran, for goodness sakes, and get a legitimate something that's gonna pass muster with the community. That's it.
Thank you. Please, please. We have to hold applause. That's not, name it either.
Marjana, thanks, Steve. That was, you said a lot of things I wanted to say. First of all, I don't know why the mayor isn't here. She's on the agenda. I don't know what happened. We have a lot of citizens here that took time out of their day, planned their week around this, and then she didn't come. So, it's very disappointing. I'm not sure what just happened here, but is there no minor roof repair in this, in this, what you just passed?
What we're doing right now is going to be doing an assessment first, and then we'll cross that bridge.
Well, meanwhile, it's not directed to you.
Yeah, I know.
That should have been done three months ago. We have, Brandon's an expert. We have experts, I call them noble warriors. They are experts. And they do it for free. And they said, this needs a minor roof repair, a minor roof repair. And we can't get it done. And it's gonna be spring. Guess what? Guess what happens in the spring? We need, we need a roof repair on that. I just want to set one thing straight. This building is not 16,000 square feet. Just for the record, it's closer to 13,000 square feet, just to be clear on that. The library director said it would cost 5.5 million. That was her words. That was just given to the Channel 7 news. So I assume the library director meant that number, 5.5. Kind of coincidental that that's the exact number that they want to put into Sheldon Park. That's, that kind of is a little odd to me, but. And lastly, I don't know why we're voting on things we voted for three months ago. We're revoting? We're taking our votes back? Is that, is that part of Robert's will, you take your votes back? Please, do the right thing.
Any other audience communication?
Yeah.
Name and address for the record, please.
Counsel, Jeff Duca, former Livonia resident, current Farmington Hills resident, but very involved on the south side of Michigan, or south side of Livonia, sorry. So, a couple of things that I wanted to mention that were addressed today, and just kind of point out some of the things that the folks before me had said. Number one, the fact that the administration planned on coming and chose not to show is, I think, is a really good symbol of what we've been up against over the past five years. I mean, if you need any, any more proof in what we're trying to do, that says it all. And through that five years, we, as the Save Alfred Noble group, which evolved into the Save Alfred Noble nonprofit, that we've been trying to let the administration know that there are funds available to secure a building. You may not be able to go to Lansing right now and get a check to fix the building. You can stabilize it. You can maintain that as an asset. It doesn't need to just sit there and rot. That is demolition by neglect. And I'm sure everyone in this room has seen or heard of an example of that over the course of their lives. When a city doesn't want a building, they let it rot. We can't do anything about it now. It's gone too far. We're gonna knock it down and do what we want with it. The people on the south side of Michigan, geez Pete, the people on the south side of Livonia have spoken very loudly and have said that they want to have a voice. They want to have a partner in this administration. And on the eve of a potential $45 million vote to build an entire downtown complex, and also on the south side have to look at this mismanaged building for the past five years, almost six years. It shut down in the fall of 2019. And it's, we just, we want to know what we're up against. We want to try and help. We want to be a partner in this process. Let the people be a partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. I think for, just to clear up any confusion, maybe we could read the motion back, or give us a quick summary, so everyone's aware of what we're actually voting on.
Sure. So I have a motion offered by the president, supported by Kerry Buzinski, allocating up to $20,000 to conduct a specific structural assessment stamped by a qualified and licensed engineer or structural engineer on the Noble building with a report to be issued to council within 60 days.
Is this what you're looking for?
Thank you.
And this is what you're supporting? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, council, any last comments? All right, Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to take the vote.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schill?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, at this time, we're gonna get right back to the regular agenda. I'm gonna pass the gavel back to President McCullough.
Thank you. All right. Let me see where we're at. All right, moving on, believe it or not, to the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. King. Moving on to consent agenda, items one through 16 on the consent agenda will be moved on as one item. These items were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on February 10th, and it's permitting non-controversial. Counsel?
So moved. Support.
I got Toy and Vice President on support. Do we have any remarks from the council on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schill?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the consent agenda has been approved, seven to zero. Now, we're gonna move on to unfinished business and new business. Item number 17 is an acceptance of a quit claim deed, comes to us from the Department of Law, in reference to secured without monetary consideration from N'Zenzio Lango, owner of Vision Family Homes, I'm sorry if I got at that, LC, in order to obtain the necessary road right of way.
Mr. President, so moved.
We got support.
Support.
So, this is new business. Is there, is anybody here to report on kind of what this is? Just to give us an overview?
Mr. President, I think we already went through this one a lot, right, Mr. Tormina? We talked a lot about this right of way. We went back and forth about it a lot. This is just administrative, we're just dedicating the right of way to the engineering so they can get their underground infrastructure.
Is that all there was? This is a receiving file?
It's split on Mayor Menford, where they're dedicating the.
Counsel, do we have anything further for discussion?
No.
Audience, seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Schill?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Vice, or, I'm sorry, President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries, seven to zero. That concludes the regular agenda. If there's any audience communication for items that are not on the agenda, now is your chance. If you already spoke, oh, Mr. King, you know, see, you know the rules.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Come on up.
I was just watching at home. Okay, a couple of things.
You are Steve King, right?
Yeah, Steve King, 339 Vice President.